Ms. Keisha, are you ready? Okay. I'd like to call the meeting of the North Little Rock Planning Commission to order, please. Ms. Keisha, would you please call a roll?
Alexander?
Here.
Blasko? Chambers?
Present.
I'm sorry, Dietz?
Here.
Foster? Harris? Phillips?
Here.
White?
Here.
Chairman Clifton?
Here. Also, we have Alderman Debbie Ross with us, and Alderman Beth White, and Alderman Steve Baxter with us today. Glad y'all are here with us. Thank you for coming, and let me remind you to please turn off your cell phones, and if you have a copy of the agenda, the Planning Commission procedures are on the back under administrative. Mr. Shawn, do you have anything?
Got a couple items. If you're here for item B or item two, they've both been postponed to the August 11th meeting. So, the apartments there on Young Road, and then the marketplace, sort of a flea market-type thing at 400 Magnolia, they've both been postponed. Second thing, with your thing, there's a letter of someone opposed to an item, so I want to make sure you have that letter to that. And remind you that we, starting last month, we were on TV, and so there was a couple that had the microphone on last month that sat back and talked like this, and it didn't pick it up at all. So be sure, if you're talking, you've got to be pretty close to the microphone, because a couple of folks talked like this, and it didn't pick it up.
Okay.
And then, we also mailed you, or Robert had mailed, getting comments from CADA, and so we got those comments, and we're going to get it over to CADA. So, Robert wanted me to say thank you for getting those comments, and we'll get it over to them.
Okay. And also, welcome to our viewing audience with us today. And also, would welcome our new Planning Director, Mr. Shawn Spencer, today. He was appointed by the City Council last night.
Yeah, he'll be effective August 1st.
Shawn has been a very good second, or first lieutenant to Mr. Boles for quite a long time, and we look forward to working with you as well as we have in the past, Mr. Spencer. Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion for our members that are not present?
No move.
Motion made and seconded. Members not present be excused. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes of our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded. They be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Under our Development Review Committee, our Chairman is Mr. Don Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Development Review Committee met and reviewed NS-2446-15, Spring Hill Development Lot 12, Block 4, a preliminary plat of a commercial lot located to the northwest corner of Stockton and Smokey Lane. The applicant was present, and we reviewed items 1 through 10 and subsections with him, and he agreed to all of those. And with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
The motion was made and seconded, that this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the Commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
We also reviewed NS-2442-15, but it has been postponed. It is the Trails of the Rock addition, the apartments at Young, on Young Road and Crystal Hill Road. And we also reviewed item NS-2350-13, Richardson Business Center, Lot 2, Block 1. They requested a one-time, 12-month extension of their plat, of their preliminary plat, and we agreed and recommend approval.
Motion made and seconded, that this be, extension be approved. Any comments, many one, in the audience on this? Any comments, many Commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move into our public hearing. Our first item on our agenda today is a special use case number 788, to allow a therapeutic massage clinic in a C1 zone located at 2525 Willow Street in North Little Rock. Is the applicant here? Please come up and give us your name.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I'm Brandon Moffett. I'm an attorney in Little Rock, Arkansas, and I represent the applicant, Mr. Craig Betts.
Any other comments that you'd like to make at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. As the Commission can see, we have applied to ask permission to place a C2 business, which is a massage business, in a C1 zoning, which is quiet office. The proposed business is 1,700 square foot facility that will be, if approved, a healing path, therapeutic massage. This business is massage business, is designed to treat people who have sustained significant injuries, and it's a therapeutic practice to bring people back. It's an alternative to chiropractic or other physical therapy. This business will operate normal business hours, 8 to 6, Monday through Saturday. It is compatible to the uses in the adjacent facility, which consists of a eye physician, a medical family practice, as well as an attorney's office. And we feel that the business, the massage therapy, our applicant and our tenant will be compatible with the area, will take a vacant, a space that's currently vacant, and put it into operation, and will be a great addition to the area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moffett. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir. What part of the building will this, will this business be occupying?
It will be Suite 1, which is, it faces Willow Street. Let me make sure that's correct.
The south, the east end or the west end of the building?
Let me, this would be the east end of the building.
Okay.
That would be south of 26th Street, and then east of the building facing Willow.
Okay, so you're not leasing them the entire building. They're leasing a portion, and another portion remains to be leased?
Yes.
Got it. Without objection, I would like to add, under, under the conditions, that the operating hours are 8 to 6, Monday through Saturday, and that, what was the other question I had? Yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to add at this time.
Ms. White?
What was the amendment?
Uh, that, he noted the operating hours would be 8 to 6, Monday through Saturday, and I merely added those, without objection, just added that as a condition.
Okay.
To the list of conditions.
Mr. Moffett, is this going to be a, a new business there? Will she still be conducting business in the other two locations?
No, no, Mr. Chairman. This business will consolidate the existing practice at 5,000 JFK, which, one of the therapists has been at for 17 years, and then Jacksonville location, as well, into one business.
Okay.
One other question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chambers?
Uh, you, does the, does Mr. Betts understand that this special use goes with, it's his special use, and if he sells the property, that use goes, that special use goes away?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Please come up and give us your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Karen Alford, and I'm one of the Officers for the Military Heights Neighborhood Association. Our President, Ms. Henderson, couldn't be here, but we did have a meeting last Thursday, and Mr. Betts was present, and we told him that we really didn't think that that was a good idea, because the neighborhood right now is, is a quiet zone, and we'd like for it to remain quiet. And at that time, we brought his attention, there were some other things going on in his building that he didn't know about, which is the beauty shop occupies most of his building, which is the old Times Building. And so, we had to bring his attention that we've had to call the police several times, because we asked that it not be used, they wanted to use it as a event center, and y'all did, you know, said no to that, but they've still been using it as an event center. And we've had to call the police several times, and the last time they took photos, there was beer bottles and stuff in the trash, and, you know, it's like till 1:30 in the morning, they were having a party. So, we brought that to his attention, and he said he didn't know, he knew about one party, but he said he didn't know about the rest of them, and he didn't know about the other parties, and he didn't know that the police had been called. So, we, 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 the members that were at the meeting the other night, we were kind of opposed to the zone changing, because right now it's a quiet neighborhood, we kind of wanted to remain quiet, and we figured if it changes, if the zone changes, then that's going to set a precedent for other businesses that want to come in and change it, and before we know it, our whole neighborhood will be, you know, commercial, and all the residents will be run out.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's not present here today, but one of the other residents, it says, "North Little Rock Planning Commission and all interested parties. I, Desi Lambert, resident of Military Heights Renewal, 2509 Allen Street of North Little Rock, deeply opposed to rezoning of this property known as 400 West 26th and the 911 location, 2525 Willow, North Little Rock. I recommend that we remain a C1 quiet zoning. Due to health reasons, I could not be here today, but I am opposed of this request. Respectfully, Desi Lambert, July 14th." So, that was one of the members that couldn't be here, but she wanted y'all to know that she was opposed, and when we voted the other night in the meeting, everybody that was present in the meeting was also opposed of the zone changing.
How many was at your meeting?
Um, I think we had about 10.
Okay, thank you. Mr. White?
We're, we're not rezoning it. It's staying as C1, we're just adding a special use to it, and this is about as quiet a business as you can have, so we're not rezoning anything.
Okay, well, I'm, okay, I know you're not rezoning it, but I guess what I meant to say is changing it to a special use, we was not in favor of the special use.
Even though it's probably the quietest thing in the whole wide world?
It, it may be.
And they'll be closing at 6 o'clock?
But Monday through Saturday, I mean, as it is on Saturday now, we can't sleep late, because his other business, they have the beauty shop there, they're there as early as 6 o'clock in the morning. We even told him that somebody's out there even washing cars. You know, they're washing cars. So, like I said, we just, we're just opposed of the change.
But we're really against the other business, and not really against this one.
Well, we voted that we were against it, too.
Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Alford.
And there's other members here, if they'd like to speak, they can voice their opinion.
Okay. Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes, just to ask, Mr. Betts' representation, you meant, you said the entire building was vacant? No.
No, there, there are current suites that are leased, and so this, we, Suite 1, I think Suite 3 is leased, to the barber, it's a barber shop, which is a C1 zoning.
Yes.
So, there is no difference, the barber shop that's there that is, was referenced in the complaint, is actually compliant zoning. This is a massage therapy, I believe was identified back when the zoning was set in North Little Rock as a C2 business, and it hasn't been reevaluated in some time.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Uh, Mr. Chambers, the letter from, from Mr. Betts, this might take care of part of your problem on Saturday, is he's just requesting, if I'm correct, that it be Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, not Sunday, or until 6, is what his letter states.
I believe, I had to, let me get to that letter. I believe it's Monday through Saturday, 8 to 6.
Says Friday, and it's signed by him.
I had some conflicting information. I guess it would probably be proper for me to ask our proposed tenants to get it corrected, and if it's, if his letter stated that, then I would actually move that the application be amended to reflect Monday through Saturday. But may I have one moment, please, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, because it says similar to the other medical offices adjacent to the building.
Yes, I, I, I was unaware of that. The, the information I got identified Monday through Saturday, 8 a.m. to 6 p.m., and that is what the tenant would request, so we would move to amend the application.
Well, he's, he made a motion, so.
I'm sorry.
It's already listed.
He made a motion, I just, I would just.
Oh, I got you, that's what was before.
I was trying to make everybody happy, since the letter said something else.
Understand, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dietz? Oh, I'm sorry. Any other comments from anyone on this application? On the application, please call a roll.
Amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have an amendment.
Oh, sorry, an addition to the restrictions.
An addition to the recommendations would be 1, 2, 3, and the amendment to the recommendations would be, the business hours would be from 8 to 6, Monday through Saturday. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. On the application, as amended, please call a roll.
Alexander?
Yes.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
I believe this will eliminate a space that a party could be held in for a much quieter use, so I'm voting yes.
Foster? I'm sorry. Phillips?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes. Your application did pass. If you'll get with Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what to do next. Thank you. Hopefully, this will be.
Call me tomorrow.
A good tenant that would be compatible to your neighborhood. Yes, ma'am?
Sir, you know why they had that beauty shop? Y'all voted that it.
Excuse me, ma'am, can you come up to the microphone and tell us who you are?
This is the same man that got the beauty shop over there, don't have respect for the neighborhood, and he's just bringing somebody else in. I don't understand why people study trying to come into our neighborhood instead of going to Chanel or somewhere like that. They come into our neighborhood, we trying to keep, it's older people in our neighborhood, we trying to keep our stuff down, and we, the beauty shop is a mess.
Yeah.
And they having parties, ain't nobody doing nothing about it, y'all voted it out. It's like they don't care what y'all say, like y'all done said nothing, and ain't nobody doing nothing about it. We calling the police, police claim that they don't even have some of the calls that they have, so we don't know what's going on, but it's like y'all disrespecting us, like y'all don't care nothing about us, just do what you want.
No, ma'am, it's not that way. There is a procedure that you go through, and it is proper that you call the police.
911.
They are the ones.
That's what we been doing. It's not working.
That's something that is out of our control.
And this man, he, at the meeting, he kept contradicting his own cellphone. He didn't know this, he didn't know about a party, and he turned around and said, "Oh, yeah, I did, it was a party, oh, yeah, this and that." He's full of crap.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business, item number two, special use case number 789 has been postponed. Next order of business, item number three, rezone case number 1730, and a conditional use case number 140, to rezone from C3 to C4, to allow car sales with a conditional use located at 7123 Service Road off MacArthur Drive. Is the applicant here? Yes.
Yeah, this is an application for a used car dealer.
And your name is?
Milton. Milton Quijano.
I'm sorry?
Milton, M-I-L-T-O-N.
Okay.
I represent Mr. Merida.
Application for a car lot?
Yes, sir.
And have you saw a list of recommendations that, some of the requirements that would be on that?
Yes, sir.
Do you approve of all of those?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree to them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this application?
I'm Joe Reynolds, and this is my area. I've lived out there for 35 years. I represent Metal Lane Property Owners Association, and we are opposed to this property being rezoned to C4. It should have never been C3, when a few years ago, about 10 years ago, North Little Rock exercised their territorial rights and zoned about eight or nine houses up and down MacArthur there, in that area, and they should have never been wholesale rezoned for people to live in. People still live in a lot of those houses, and we are opposed to a used car lot going in there. We'd like to keep this as a subdivision. Now, if you start on MacArthur Drive, at Pershing Boulevard, which is about the 2,500 block, you get out to where this applicant is doing, there's eight, there's, I believe there's nine used car lots up and down that hole already, plus there is four painting body shops and two motorcycle shops, and Branch Bank closed and left. We're looking to upgrade this neighborhood. We don't need another used car lot, it'll look like East Washington Avenue used to and, and East Broadway. Now, we've got a serious problem with this, and, and right now, they've been parking cars on that property. I tried to get code enforcement to move them, but I didn't have any luck with that. There's anywhere from three to 12 cars parked there right now, have been. They moved a few of them the last few days, and I have some other people here that have lived out here 50 or more years, and like I said, we are opposed to this, and it was a foreclosure house, and I dealt with the real estate people that had it listed and had bought the house, and they didn't get my paperwork in, in a timely manner, and somebody else got the house. Had I got the house, I would have been standing right here, right now, asking for an R2. We don't need any more used car lots. When you get into used car lots, some of them are so sleazy that I wouldn't even drive their cars home if they gave them to me. So, now, we've got a serious problem with, with going out that area, and you go just a little further on out the road there, and there's two salvage yards, and a tire shop, and a, and another painting body shop. So, we've got a serious problem in that area going downhill instead of going uphill. We need better stuff in our area. And on this letter that we got, I called the contact number three times. Nobody ever answered, and finally, I left a message, and nobody returned my phone calls to talk about it. And like I said, we are opposed to it, and we're going to be, if it, if it gets passed here and goes to the City Council meeting, we're going to be opposed to it over there. So, we do not want this in our neighborhood, we don't need it in our neighborhood or whatever, and when I can't talk to the people that put out the registered letter, won't return my phone calls, it don't seem to me that they're cooperating, that they want to do anything that's anywhere near right. And this foreclosure was a HUD thing, and HUD requires that you live in the property, if you buy the property, HUD requires that you live in it for one year, or a family member live in it for one year. I don't hardly see how we're going to do a used car lot and park 12 cars in a yard and a family live in it. And we've got a serious problem here, and we need to stop it right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
If anybody's got any questions for me, I'll attempt to answer them.
Questions from many Commissioners? Mr. Chambers?
Yes, one, Shawn, you may not, this is a question of staff. Shawn, you may not be able to answer this question, but item three says, "Existing structure to be connected to the Public Sewer Service." Do you know how far the public line is?
There should be a line running down MacArthur, isn't there, right in front?
Pardon me, I can't hear.
The sewer, is there a sewer li, there's a sewer line?
There's a sewer down MacArthur.
MacArthur, yeah.
On that side, on the north or west side of the.
So, by turning the house into commercial, they would have to connect to this sewer line.
Okay, and, and just as a, as a, okay, never mind, thank you.
Ms. Blasko?
Number three, Dawn.
Yes.
States that all the new developments within 300 feet would have to connect, number three on the front, I'm sorry. And I don't know if that's a zoning law or a.
State law.
It's a state law.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments, many one like to speak on this application? Uh, yes, sir. Come up and give us your name, please.
My name is James William Palmer. I live at 4119 Aspen Drive. I've lived there for 35 years, and I'd like to say that most of the people live around me are elderly, senior citizens, all of them living on fixed income, and it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, and I don't think we need any more used car lots out that way. That street they're talking about, Service Road, it is a very, very narrow road, and you can barely get one vehicle through there, and if you ever have an emergency, you have to get a fire truck or anything, and there's, chances are good they're not making it. And for that reason, and that, that our neighborhood's going downhill real fast, we'd like to try to keep it livable, because we can't afford to move to higher-priced places. We'd like to object to this rezoning from C3 to C4.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, yes, sir, do you have a comment?
My name's David Lackey. Where he's putting that car lot in, that's right next door to my property. It's a, I've got a rent property, just like these other people, they've been there for years, I've been out here for years, and he's got another car lot just on down from me, that I've got some rent houses that he put, he went in there and bought the, right across the street from me, and he tore that house down, and I'm talking about, he's got cars piled in there that you can't even drive up that one road. I'd hate to see what he's going to do over here on this other side, because he's messed my two rent houses up to where they ain't worth nothing. I mean, you know, it's just, it looks like, it looks, it looks real bad. I mean, I know I'm out of, I'm out of the city there, but I'd hate to see what he's going to do over here for these people here, because they live there. I live on out, but, you know, I, I'm not for this, because I got a rent piece of property there, and I'd hate to see this here to let that, that rent property go downhill, too. I don't think it's a good thing, but, you know, I'll answer any of y'all's questions if you got any, too.
Ms. Blasko?
Um, you said on out, your rental property?
I, I got.
What's the address?
Uh.
701.
Who what now?
Rent property down on Service Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, on Service Road is, uh.
701.
Yeah, he knows it.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
This, first time I've ever done anything like this, I just didn't know, but.
Okay.
I'm not even prepared, really, but I just wanted to come to here, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey.
No, thank you.
Mr. White?
I call for a question.
Question's been called. On the application, please call the roll.
Alexander?
No.
Blasko?
No.
Chambers?
No.
Dietz?
No.
Phillips?
No.
White?
No.
Mr. Clifton?
No. Your application did not pass. You do have the option to take it before the City Council. If you need to find an Alderman that would sponsor that and take it before the City Council, you can call Mr. Spencer tomorrow, and he can tell you the procedure for that. Thank you. Uh, item number four, public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance concerning urban farming. Mr. Spencer?
About three meetings ago, Chairman Clifton asked, created a subcommittee of Ron Harris and Mr. Dietz on doing a little study on a letter that we received from Jason Carter, the City Attorney, concerning urban farming. So, we, we had met and came up with, the last page of your little handout there is our recommendations from that. The issue was, under the permitted use table, there was two items that contradicted what was under Section 3.1, so we're recommending to remove, to remove those two items from the permitted use table, the agriculture farming and farmlands, crop and ranching, and then adding to item 3.17, the statement, "No person shall keep any horse, cow, or other livestock except in an enclosed pasture containing one acre for each animal. The fencing for the enclosed pasture shall be a minimum of 300 foot for many residents." So, that was our recommendation from that subcommittee, and asking for a vote on this to send it on to City Council.
Mr. White?
I saw a move for approval.
Motion made and seconded to be approved. Mr. Chambers? Made and seconded to be approved. Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes. What is this legislation remedying, Mr. Spencer?
Three or four months ago, it was the issue of cows out at Stone Links. I remember they, they were concerned about the new owners that bought the golf course was going to turn it into a pasture. So, that got solved. So, this is sort of just the outcome, that we realized that there's a contradiction between the permitted use table and another statement in the zoning ordinance, so.
And this will resolve that?
Yep. That resolves that conflict.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Motion made and seconded to be passed and sent to City Council. Please call the roll.
Alexander?
Yes.
Blasko? Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz? Phillips?
Yes.
White? Chairman Clifton?
Yes, thank you. Will be sent up to City Council. Next order of business is public comment. Anyone? Mr. White?
Hey, Sean.
Tell me about chickens, again.
The one from my memory is, the coop has to be 75 foot from a structure, from a house.
From a house.
So, so you can't, well, it just matters how far your neighbor's house is from the structure. It's got to be 75 foot from any...
The person in their backyard could put it up against their fence, their back fence, as long as that back fence is 75 foot away from...
The next neighbor.
The structure, okay? Even though it's on their fence, and it's only two foot from their property.
The coop would have to meet the accessory structure, which would be five foot away.
Five foot away, okay. All right, and then the second question, how many chickens can we have?
I'd have to get back with you on that one. I don't think there's a limit on the number, there's, you can't have a rooster, I know that.
Yeah, I think it's five or six, but I got a debate the other day, and I told them I'd find out, so, but I think it is.
I'll email you tomorrow.
If it's not, we need to do an amendment.
Okay, I'll email you tomorrow with that.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, Mr. Clifton. Are we, how do we respond to CADA's request for commission comments on the trend plan, Mr. Spencer?
The...
We email that back to you?
Yeah, we were to get emails by the 10th, but if you still got some, get them to us, and then we'll get, we'll forward that email on to CADA.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I do.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, I want to thank Robert Boils for his loyal and continuous service to this commission. He has brought diversity and excitement to all our decisions, and his counsel has been greatly appreciated in all of its various forms.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. I think all the commissioners would like to join with you in commending Mr. Boils for the service that he's turned into the city. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, you know, I used to attend real regular, and I had a lot of health issues, and I haven't been here a lot, but if something concerns my area, I try to get here, and I appreciate the planning commission voting a solid no on another used car lot. We need another one of them like we need another hole in the head, so I appreciate it, and I'll be here to make comments if something concerns my area. Appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Thank you, everyone, for coming, your concern. Motion made and seconded, be adjourned. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.